This conference will now be recorded.
I want to welcome everyone to the Tuesday, January 30th, 2024 public hearing for the Tilton Planning Board. I think this is the largest group I've ever seen. We'll start out by reading the zoning amendments. Christine, you have it so you can read. The first public hearing zoning meeting, zoning ordinance that we are changing is a solar ordinance. This is a housekeeping issue. Christine, would you like to read it, please?
Sure. Are you in favor of amendment number one as proposed by Tilton Planning Board for the Tilton zoning ordinance to amend Article 16.7, review process for solar energy systems freestanding to remove permitted in all commercial core and research industry zones, except for Central Business District below. Special exception in CBR, RA, RB, and RC zones and replace with in all zones. The purpose is to correct the language in the ordinance which does not accurately reference zones in Tilton and replace with all zones.
Is there any comment from the public? Hearing none, we'll move to the second one. The second is, are you in favor of amendment two as proposed by the Tilton Planning Board for the Tilton zoning ordinance to amend Article six, Appendix B, two dot A, seven, conversion of a existing residential structure to multi-dwelling units to add a maximum of four dwelling units? The purpose of this is to limit the conversion of existing residential structures in the village to four dwelling units only. Any comment from the public on that? Would you like to read the next one?
I have a question.
Yes, sorry.
Pat Constantino. What do you consider village district?
Well, I think zoning the village district is the downtown area from railroad to railroad, I believe.
No, the village district is not, doesn't include the downtown. It's just the village district, which is an actual district defined on the zoning map. Which includes, I mean, I could pull up the map if someone wanted to see, includes the tree streets and part of the village district. Downtown is its own district.
Okay.
So I would like to note that the Charter of Permitted Uses, this applies to village residential, downtown, as well as mixed use, which is by special exception at the moment due to how it's defined, given that we're adding a maximum of four dwelling units to line seven of the, sorry, I think this is going to have more of an impact than we initially thought because it's not just going to apply to the village residential because of the wording change that we're making.
I'm not sure.
So if we're, we're saying that so we're amending this to add a maximum of four dwelling units here, which applies to more than just the village residential. The change as written would apply to all of the districts.
Wherever it's permitted, wherever that's permitted on the chart.
Right, so we would be limiting downtown to four units.
Well, downtown is already limited to four units.
And they can get, go to zoning or get a special exception if they need to do that, but.
We can't hear you out here.
No, we're just, we're saying that downtown is already limited.
So technically, nothing is limited to a maximum of four units per the Charter of Permitted Uses.
Yeah, right. So I think, I think the confusion is, so right now, four units is the maximum allowed downtown.
Where, that's not what the Charter of Permitted Uses says, though.
Yes, you go to the density, but then, so the Charter of Permitted Uses, if you go to the density, right? So the density, so the density in downtown is four. The density in village is two. However, if you are converting, this allows four units if you're converting an existing structure now from one or two units, you're allowed four units if this were to pass. You could also convert a downtown single family to four units, but again, that was allowed before because four is the density for downtown. So on the last page of the dimensional values.
So is this applying to Appendix C, or is it applying to?
No, it's not going to apply to the dimensional values. It still will be, the village will still only be allowed to have two units max. We're not changing the table of dimensional value. However, you had an item under residential in your ordinance that allows the conversion from residential to multi-dwelling units. But it never said what the maximum was. But remember, we discussed at the planning board meeting that in the past, it had that on there of four dwelling units. So we were really just correcting it back to the intent, I think, the original intent of that line item seven. It used to say four dwelling units and somehow, over the years, it somehow got dropped. So we were just trying to correct it back to the four dwelling units.
Okay, all right. So we're making the change to the permitted uses instead of making a update to the maximum.
Correct.
I just, I wanted to clarify that.
So if someone was building a new building in the village district, for example, they could do only two, up to two units. But if they're converting a two unit or they buy a big single family, they can convert it to four, up to four units per the allowed uses.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that the actual change did not apply to a single district, that there were more as far as the Charter of Permitted Uses because.
It's a use change, not a district change, correct.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
All right. Is there any more discussion? Pat?
Why would we want to change if there was a conversion? I mean, if you have a highly populated district with limited land and limited parking, we have, over the years, lots of issues with parking on the streets and sidewalks and all of that. That, would we add to allow to convert two dwelling to a maximum of four dwelling? To add to that, to the problem?
So I believe as far as going from a two unit to a four unit, there is a parking space requirement for the number of units. And does it also map to the number of bedrooms as well?
Is that written in your, in your planning that existing now?
Yeah, there's a parking requirement of two parking per, per unit.
Would be a part of the site plan.
Right, but also, Pat, just to clarify where this came from, again, this already exists as open-ended. So I think the board was trying to close it or limit it to four.
Well, I think that, but there's a lot of people on, well, there was a lot of people on.
There's one person online.
Again, I know that people are going to be watching this. I just want to clarify this.
You'd probably use a microphone. Can we get a microphone?
You're right, yeah.
Reinstate what you were, your question because it can't be heard anywhere else.
That's a first. I'm asking the question simply for the public because you're looking for a warrant article and you're looking to convert it. They don't know the, number one, the history of it, that it was previous and it's, the intent is. When you go up to the ballot and you vote, they don't really know the, that it's just merely an intent. If you just go up and say, well, my first thought in reading this, if I didn't come to the public hearing tonight, I would say, in a highly populated area, what about parking? What about the issues of parking on streets and things like that? And then we have limited land, so could they create parking? But now what you're telling me is that it's written in your site plan rules and regulations that it's two parking spaces per unit. Right?
True. I can clarify that. 10.9, off-street parking, two exclusively designated off-street parking spaces with immediate proximity to the associated unit are required for each unit in condominium, apartment, and multifamily dwellings. This was passed by petition on March 14th at the 2006 meeting.
So I would also like to note that this clause did exist in previous zoning regulations. It looks like it got dropped potentially clerically at some point in time. So this had been there previously and has just been reinstated. But from a, you know, practical standpoint, people are unlikely to be converting single-family homes into, you know, five-plus units because existing parking limitations would put you at, you know, 10 parking spaces minimum. And five units and above, you then are required to sprinkler the building, which can be, you know, very cost prohibitive. So the majority of time, single-family conversions are up to four. And it's then a commercial versus residential property, which, yep.
Thank you, Nate, for adding that. Okay, is there any other conversation? Chuck, I know you're online, do you have anything to add or say?
No, I don't, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Do you understand that now? All right, the next petition.
You're good.
All right. Nate, would you like to read the next one? This is a petition warrant article. Are there any on the ones that are going to be on the ballot that were initiated from the planning board at this point in time? No more discussion? Okay. The next is a petition warrant article. And Nate, if you'd like to read it, and then I will turn it over to the petitioner if he would like to make comments.
Well, Nate, yeah, Nate's going to read it first.
So the petition warrant article, are you in favor of amending the Tilton zoning ordinances as follows? Amending Article four, Establishment of Districts by deleting MU2, Mixed Use Two District, and replace it with MU2 Overlay District. The article in its entirety is available on the Tilton website at tiltonnh.org.
So I would ask that, I guess, either the planning board or the petitioner should read the entire article into the record. So the planning board's welcome to do it, or the planning board can request that the petitioner do it.
You wanted to continue, read.
State of New Hampshire, town of Tilton, Belknap County, voter petition for zoning ordinance amendment for the town, 2024 Town Warrant, submitted to the town clerk on December 13th, 2023. The below voters of the town of Tilton petition that follows that the following amendments to the zoning ordinance be included in the 2024 Town Warrant. Are you in favor of amending the Tilton zoning ordinance as follows? One, amending Article four, Establishment of Districts by deleting Mixed Use, MU2, Mixed Use Two Districts, and replacing it with MU2OL, Mixed Use Two Overlay Districts. Two, amending Article four, Establishment of Districts by deleting the following paragraph. MU2, Mixed Use Two District is designed to accommodate a variety of residential, retail, institutional, recreational, and service uses in an integrated, planned, village-like setting where water and sewer service is available. This district was approved in March 2005, but is not shown on the tax map for the town of Tilton as no land has been approved for the district at the present time. And replacing it with the following paragraph. MU2OL, Mixed Use Two Overlay District is an overlay district on the resort commercial district designed to allow by conditional use permit a variety of residential, retail, institutional, recreational, and service uses in an integrated, planned, village-like setting where water and sewer service is available. Three, amend the zoning ordinance by adding the following. Article 16, Mixed Use Two Overlay District. 16 dot one, purpose, 16 dot one dot one. The Mixed Use Two Overlay District is an overlay district on the resort commercial district designed to allow by conditional use permit a variety of residential, retail, institutional, recreational, and service uses in an integrated, planned, village-like setting where water and sewer service is available. 16 dot two, allowed uses. 16 dot two dot one. All uses permitted, uses and uses allowed by special exception in the resort commercial district are allowed under the same conditions permitted or by special exception as the resort commercial zone. In addition, all residential uses except detached accessory dwelling units are permitted. Any mixed use of allowed uses are allowed with a conditional use permit. 16 dot three, performance standards for conditional use permit. 16 dot three dot one. Minimum lot size is 15.15 acres. 16 dot three dot two. Municipal sewer and water are required. 16 dot three dot three. 25% to five of multiple family dwelling units must be assisted living units, handicap accessible, or restricted to residents of 55 years of age or older. 16 dot three dot four. There shall be a minimum commercial component of 5%, five of the buildable land that creates an integrated village-like setting. 16 dot three dot five. The proposed mix of uses shall not be detrimentally inconsistent for the resident guests, customers, or the public. 16 dot three dot six. The site shall have adequate ingress and egress from the public highway. Then there is a table, zoning district, MU2OL, min lot size, 15 acres, min frontage, 200 feet, front setback, 20 feet, rear setback, 20 feet, side setback, 20 feet, max coverage 50%, max structure height 50 feet. Bakes, max residential density, four dwelling units per acre. Four, allow the town planning department to renumber the above if necessary for the purpose of integration into the existing zoning ordinance. The remainder of this page intentionally left blank voter signatures to follow.
Would you like to introduce yourself and?
I'd be happy to. My name is John Bernard. I'm the one who brought the petition around and had it signed. So really, who brought this forward is, is the voters. They had 25 registered voters in the town. And as Nate said eloquently, and I'm glad you read it instead of me, that was a lot. The voter petition were really, it's going to be a zoning ordinance amendment. So as we all know, this mixed use two, you may not know, exists. And it doesn't have any land in it. So we're trying to make it an overlay district, and that's the resort commercial district, which extends east of 93 over towards the Winter Swamp Bridge. It's mostly along the Route 3 corridor. But as he read it, we also realized that you have to have city water and sewage, and you have to have more than 15 acres. So there's several pieces that would qualify for it, but it's not like we're saying we can open up the whole area to this.
You're speaking into the microphone.
I'm sorry.
You can speak into that mic, you don't need that hand mic if you're using the.
Feels good, dad.
You like that? However, you like.
I'm not sure what to do, I have two mics now. All right, so we all need, we all know how much assisted living is needed. This is one way of getting it, and housing in general is needed. You know, we bring teachers, we bring medical people, first responders, they need a nice place to live. That's what this will allow us to do, is create that, especially the people that are just starting off. And in the mixed use two, which I'm hoping we can show a video that would show, it doesn't create a tax burden. It is the least impact on the town to put houses in there. So with the permission of the chairman, I'd like to run a 10-minute video instead of listening to me. It speaks much more eloquently and really defines what we're trying to do with a mixed use two. Okay, thank you.
Further delay?
And will they see it online?
And they see it online?
Yes, they will.
How about lights in here?
Nate, it's the push button behind the Hampshire flag.
Lafayette, Louisiana, it's a typical mid-sized American city. American cities have one building that bulldozed in the six states. And like most American cities, it's broke. It's full of aging, structure, and desperate need to repair and not enough to maintain it. But American cities, Lafayette acknowledged this fact and requested the help of Strong Town and Urban 3, a consulting company that studies the economic impact of the development. Their analysis in Lafayette uncovered a harsh reality that chafed all to every municipality in North America, as well as any city fitting the American car-centric style of development. But let's back up. In a series, we discussed how identical lots in a city have very different properties. In this example, a 100-year-old commercial block built in the traditional style of development drastically outperformed a shiny new development created in the modern car-centric style. But despite the differences in revenue, both blocks have the same cost to maintain their infrastructure. So by bulldozing a whole block of shops to build this car-centric second-rate taco joint, this is destroying it. This example alone should be enough to give anyone that the modern car-centric suburban style of development is broken. But it's worth exploring this. Does this hold up in other cities? And what happens when you bring into account the cost of servicing these properties with roads, water pipes, sewers, et cetera? That brings us back to Lafayette. This is a map of the revenue and expenses data uncovered by Urban 3. So what are we looking at? Well, any successful business attracts its ROI, its firm on investment. When making a decision between two competing businesses, it's critical to to result in less revenue and less investment. And too many projects with a return on investment could bankrupt the company. But in order to know your ROI, you need to know things, your revenue and your expenses. Urban 3 created municipal investment, or Lafayette. This map shows municipal revenue per acre. So why per acre, other than the fact that Americans can't use metric? Every property in a city needs service, and the majority of services are expensive, as spread out they are. Roads on the, this example, the farther a parcel of land is from everything else, the more asphalt is needed to get there. Worst-case scenario, cul-de-sac, which are basically just city subsidized driveways. This also impacts water infrastructure, suburbs, and all other physical infrastructure, as well as the cost of leasing our apartment, even the cost of paying education. But while per acre revenue is actually a good approximation, Urban 3 wanted to fully understand the expenses, so they painstakingly calculated the cost of services for each parcel of land in Lafayette. It looks something like this. This shows every area that's a net positive for the city in gray and every area that's a net negative in red. And here it is in 3D. This analysis has some fascinating results. Is that downtown is wildly profitable. This has been surprising because there's nothing particularly remarkable about downtown Lafayette. Certainly not bad, but you never know from looking at the effects that this is the economic engine of the city. Places like this are a drain on finances. But this shouldn't be too, when you think about it, because there's an insane amount of asphalt and infrastructure here for a very small number of shops. And for bizarre reason, the Google Street View card down every aisle of this parking lot. But since they did it over multiple years, they moved down this way and watched towards the rest go out of business. Most of these profitable gray areas are the neighborhoods built on the river. But one of the biggest is this place, a modern mixed-use walkable neighborhood called River Ranch. Places like this are a net positive for the state. One of the most discoveries that's discovered is that the replacement of all the infrastructure in Lafayette, something that happened over about one generation, was about $2 billion. And that's infrastructure, not the other everyday costs needed for a city. Yet the existing tax base is smaller than that. For instance, Strong Towns, the average spending in Lafayette was, their tax bill goes from about $1,500 per year to $9,200 per year. But the median household income in Lafayette was only $41,000 at the time. There's simply no way that can happen. But those simple changes are hiding bigger picture, who subsidize who? Because these gray sections are the poorer areas, while these red areas significantly wealthier. Here's a fun quiz. Which of these two neighborhoods is subsidizing the other? Number one. Number two. Yeah, it's the first one that's subsidizing the second. The poorest people in Lafayette are consistently subsidizing wealthy suburbanites. But I don't want to pick on Lafayette here. As I said at the beginning, there's nothing particularly unique about Lafayette, and these results are typical for most American cities. Well, like Lafayette, the suburban sprawl is built on wetlands, which results in unusually high cost for stormwater management, but otherwise, it's pretty typical. So let's look at another city that's not literally built on a swamp, Eugene, Florida. Here's the Urban 3 map of taxable value. Once again, downtown is clearly visible. And here's a 3D map of revenue compared to expenses. It's still obvious downtown is, but you might be wondering about this little bump over here. This is Creston Village, a modern mixed-use development, because once again, these kind of mixed-use walkable neighborhoods financially outperform car-dependent suburbia single time. By the way, here's what that 3D map of Eugene looks like. The spikes correspond almost perfectly to modern car-dependent suburban developments. A visual reminder that car-dependent suburbia is subsidized by productive suburban places. The data from Urban makes the subsidies visible, and it makes it vertically. The data from Urban Three makes the subsidies visible, and it makes it critically who subsidizing who? In Eugene, Urban Three analyzed nine categories of development: residential, mixed-use, and suburban, in low, medium, and high density. And here's what the average revenue for a city looked like after taking into account servicing of these businesses. In the case of Eugene, the low-density suburban housing is being subsidized, everything else. People may look at this, but I want to live in a low-density, single-family home, and that's fine, but only if you're old enough to pay for it. But there's a bigger problem. This is what the mixed-use map looks like for Eugene, Oregon. The majority of land is exclusively for a single-family residential, which means that the majority of properties in the city are a net negative of the city's expenses. And this is a pretty difficult result for an American city. When you see results like this, is there surprise that American cities are broke? Here's the tax per acre for South Carolina. See if you can downtown, or here in South Carolina, or in St. Soto. And here's the entire state of New Hampshire, with all of the traditional downtown neighborhoods clearly visible. In every case, in every region Urban Three has analyzed, traditional mixed-use walkable neighborhoods dramatically outperform car-centric suburbia. But in North America, we say it difficult, or even impossible, to build new neighborhoods this way because of modern zoning and other car regulations. Of course, these mathematics apply outside of America as well. Here's a map of Auckland, New Zealand. You can see the increased revenue along transit lines. And you need to zoom out significantly to see downtown, because it is so financially productive. So what do we do with this information? Well, our cities consider their policies and decide what kind of developments they encourage. The city of wealth in Ontario, Canada, not far from my home, is an excellent example. In 2013, wealth needed improvement. Like all Canadian cities, they were considering expanding their borders and sprawling. After running this kind of ROI analysis, they decided to focus on infinities by making it easier for developers to build buildings that encourage walkable neighborhoods, like this one. Here's what revenue per hectare, because Canada, looked like for wealth in 2013. Not bad. In general, Canadian cities are better with their finances than American cities. But here it is in 2016, and in 2019. This is what a financially solvent city looks like. Which path will financially struggling American cities choose for their future? They can decide to make it easy to build mixed-use walkable neighborhoods, taking good use of land and encouraging walking, cycling, and public transit. Or they can build one with this garbage and bankrupt. Seems like a pretty easy decision. I'd like to thank you guys' words on Patreon, who paint them mathematically annihilating first in 3D. This kind of content...
So I'd like to thank everybody for their ten minutes to watch this, and I...
John, we have a question from Mr. Mitchell.
Okay, thank you. First, a comment, and that is, I guess, one concern that I have is that in any kind of usually large areas where there are going to be developments, there's always usually some kind of a requirement for a certain amount of green space or open space. The way I'm looking at this right now, with four units per acre, I see that there's no area set aside at all for any open or green space, which means that 100% of that current fifteen acre or whatever could be developed. Secondly, it sounds to me like pretty much that what this is doing is going to take and virtually do away with resort commercial and rename everything as MU2OL.
Thank you, Chuck.
Would you like to address that, John?
Yeah, the first thing I'd like to say is it clearly stays that 50% of the land has to be set aside. So the piece that I have is a fifty-acre tract, so twenty-five acres would be set aside. And actually, how would, trying to design it out, actually thirty acres would be set aside. So that would be my first comment. And the second one is that this is a very expensive way to develop property. I don't think everybody's going to run in and bring city water and storage to the commercial use district. There are a lot of good uses that I could do. I could be, for example, I've been approached by a hotel to put a hotel in there. There's been some consideration for another grocery store, believe it or not. And also, the storage facility. Several people have talked to me, and I was actually thinking of one myself, or a storage facility. But it's unusual to have fifty acres with city water and storage available. And it's unusual, we find ourselves in such a times where housing is at an all-time crisis. And it's easy for us, or for me as a developer, to put in a cluster development in there, which would be allowed up to forty-four units right now of the houses that they showed us on there. So this is definitely a departure from what is allowed in the zoning, but it also is the future. I can give you many examples of why I'm standing here, and one in particular is because of my son just moved out and looked for a place, and he had to find one in Nashua. He's a gardener, and it was an apartment building that he could afford. He's a college graduate, and so is his girlfriend, but he likes to garden. And these had gardening plots with it. With a land, piece of land like this, we're able to do things that will allow people to encourage to use the green area. Not only that, we have the walking trail. The Wild Trail is very close to this property. So I hope I've answered that, Chuck. I would like to open it up at this point. I mean, I've said everything that I think I can say. I can't say it any more eloquently than the video did. I'm good with my...
Chuck, do you have more?
Kathy Mitchell, I have a question, two questions.
Yes?
Yes, Kathy.
Number one being, any zoning change is supposed to correlate to the vision statement of the town's master plan. I'm curious how this correlates to our vision statement.
Okay. I've read the master plan recently, and it talks about the development of east of ninety-three, where they expect it to be mostly, have the most of it, and it is the most convenient in place. So in the master plan, it actually talks about that, east of ninety-three. So I would like to...
Okay, Kathy.
And the second question is, with an overlay district, which this really isn't, because an overlay would be over part of another zoning district, but with an overlay district, they always have additional requirements beyond what are the permitted uses. And I wondered if there were any additional requirements beyond the permitted uses in the old resort commercial?
I'd be happy to address it. And this, as Nate eloquently read them all off, the lot size is fifteen acres. You have to have 25% for assisted living of these units, and you have to have city water and storage, and that is not required in any of the commercial district, just in the overlay district, the resort commercial district.
Okay. Nate with next. Thank you, John.
So I just wanted to read the vision statement from the town of Tilton master plan, since it was referenced, and not everyone may know it off the top of their head. For more than a decade and a half, Tilton experienced rapid economic growth in the vicinity of the exit twenty corridor. The primary goal of town stewards during this period was to guide this event and the resulting increased valuation to stabilize the tax base and offset rising costs. The secondary and converse goal was to protect rural area and agricultural zones from intense residential development. Though largely successful, these goals did not address many fundamental needs of our citizens, needs such as modern recreational facilities, preservation of green quarters, and the acquisition of important watershed areas and protection of the town's drinking water supplies. A vision for the future of Tilton is a thriving, as a thriving community must include positive improvements in the following areas. One, improving the quality of life for sensitive sins through community and safety improvements. Two, actively working to protect the natural resources that buffer the community from development at exit twenty. And three, thoughtfully planning for future capital needs of the community so that infrastructure keeps pace with growth trends. Thank you.
So John, I had a couple of questions for you. If you could explain sixteen, three, three, it says 25% of the multifamily dwelling units must be assisted living, handicap accessible, or restricted to the residence of 55 years older. Now, you're saying that 25% must be assisted living, but that's not actually what it says here. As long as 25% are handicap accessible, which anybody could live in a handicap accessible, so if you have the buildings with four units, if one on the ground floor has proper-sized door and bathroom, you're covered. Anybody can go in there. It could be eighteen years old or 55. So I just want to be clear, it's not guaranteeing 25% assisted living, nor is it guaranteeing 25% will be residents of 55 years of older. Is that true?
No, it is guaranteeing that you have to be 55 or older. So the assisted living part of it is, if we don't fill them, then we need to be able to backfill them with people of 55 and older. But no, it is not, you cannot move into that area if you're less than 55 years of age. And that would be required for both of them, as how we understood it, and that was our spirit and the intent of it.
Okay, so it would be all those or restricted to 55 or older?
Correct. And like I say, you have to, this project is one thing, we get it approved. It's another thing to get it financed. And in the process of getting finance, if they can't fill those up with assisted living, we need to be able to put 55 and older on it. It has to work at 100% or 90% occupancy to be a valuable thing. I mean, the taxes on this thing is probably close to $800,000 or more. So that is the, I understand your question, and I hope I answered it.
Well, just that it's not, it doesn't guarantee 25% assisted living.
It doesn't guarantee 25% of living. That is the goal. That's what we put it in here for. But as I was talking to developers and people that have to finance this and banking and stuff, that allows us to put it in 55 and older. And not everybody will need assisted living, but you know, let's hope, none of us still, We do need it in the town, though, I can tell you that. And this would allow an opportunity for that to come in.
So just as a point of clarification, sixteen dot three dot three reads as 25% of multifamily dwelling units must be assisted living units, comma, handicap accessible, comma, or restricted to residents of 55 years of age or older. And per the zoning district chart, a minimum lot of fifteen acres at four units per acre would be sixty dwelling units, 25% of which would need to meet those conditions.
John, if I can ask a question?
Please.
What you were saying, from what I understand, is that the first option will be for assisted living of that 25%?
Correct.
If you're unable to fill it with assisted living, which I, from what I understand, around this area, that's not the case. They can, they have people on waiting lists. But if you can't, then you will open it up to 55 or over.
That's correct.
You're not going to initially say, anybody 55 or over come here?
No.
Is that correct?
Nope.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions?
Pat, and then I'll say something. I'm still Pat. Sixteen dot three dot three, I'm not going to say the word confused, because I'm generally Is this exactly the way, these two pieces of paper, exactly the way it's going to be on the ballot?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. That, that being said, that being said, to me, it tells me what John Scanlon was concerned with, that it says 25% of multifamily dwellings must be assisted living units. There's nobody in, nobody in the town of Tilton that's going to fight more for assisted living in the town of Tilton than me. I've been trying to do this for 15 years, and you know that. However, it does give leeway to handicap accessible and/or restricted to residents of 55 years of age or older. And we can sit here and say, our intent was, but when the people vote for this in exactly the way it's written here, that's a very different story. So it needs clarification here before it goes to the ballot. Are, it needs, we need to know, are you building assisted living units? And you know, yes, I believe that you are, but that question needs to be answered to the people in the town of Tilton. And then you can, however you need to word it, then if those units are not filled to capacity, then it's restricted to residents of 55 years of age or older. But the intent is, and what you want to say to the public, is that you are going to build assisted living units, and 25% of the multifamily dwellings will be that. But that's not what this paragraph states, John.
I understand what you're saying, but you have to understand, well, I hope you understand...
Microphone, please.
And use a microphone.
You are correct, and it is done intentionally that way. This is a $45 million build-out. If you went in and you told somebody, they have to build it out, they have to put assisted living in, and if they don't fill it, they can't rent it out to anybody else 55 or older, cannot live there. You have to have assisted living component to it. It'd be very hard, one, to get it financed, two, to get anybody willing to do it. This is the best solution that I can come up with. Now, this isn't just for my piece of property, it just isn't me. This is an overlay district that's going to go over the entire resort commercial district. And if the town decides that this isn't what they want, they don't want to do that, then we can move forward, and we have no chance of this happening. This gives us an opportunity to make it happen. The town also needs workforce housing. Ninety-three% of the people that work in this town commute in this town. So I know, Pat, that that's your pet pee, that you want assisted living, and I understand that, and I would love to have it, too. I've had calls from people from San Burton already said that they heard that I was putting an assisted living facility, and they'd like to get on a list. I said, well, we've got a few steps to go through before we start taking a list. My personal feeling is that you're going to have it filled with them, but if it doesn't, I can't be caught holding the bag, trying to finance it, waiting for someone to do assisted living. And there's three different types of assisted living. We haven't even gotten involved with that. There's three different ones. One, you come and go on your own. Second one, you need some help. The third one's dementia, where people can't be left alone. I'm only planning on doing level one, where people come and go on their own. So you know, they get a free meal. If something breaks, they have someone there to help them. If they fall down, they have someone in the building to come up and help them. That's where I'm trying to go. I can't solve everything. I, there are some problems out here. I am trying to make a solution to some of our problems in the town, but I am not going to be the savior to everybody, and I'm just doing the best I can as one person. And this is what I can, I can do. And I stand up in front of the town, you know, and... and I have to walk with my head high, so.
So I, I would like to.
There are other people who have their hand up, Nate.
Oh, sorry.
So keep taking what you're trying. Yes.
My name is Iris Ayano. I have a quick question. How many buildings are you actually planning to put on that property?
Three or four?
Three or four, right.
Okay.
And then 25% will be for all those buildings or just one building?
One building.
Just one building?
Microphone, John.
I got two mics.
Take it with you.
Usually with an assisted living facility, you have food that's prepared for them. So that would have to be in one building. It has to be centrally located. Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm going to stay right here.
Sandy, can you, Nate, add a comment?
Yeah, no, so I just, I agree that the wording, as, as currently stated, is open to interpretation. And you know, the second or third development, if this were to pass, you could see these conditions met by a development that had 25% of units for residents 55 or older without having assisted living. You could argue that having the handicap accessible, instead of having it say handicapped individuals, opens up the door for non-handicapped individuals living in those units.
We don't need to get into what the future holds. Okay, thank you. Sandy?
I was just going to say, in regard to all this that's been talked about, I think people are not thinking about the fact that the whole project would still have to go through a site plan and all the conditions of approval that would be attached to it would have to be abided by as well. So as far as, this is just the first step. It's like everything else in our zoning. Through the site plan process, when you're going and making decisions on this and that, there are going to be certain things that will become conditions of it being, you know, completed and then given the permit for, you know, opening.
That's exactly right, Sandy. Thank you very much for making that. That's a very important point.
Yeah, Sandy, that's a good point because also in the ordinance is a conditional use permit that's required as well, which is an additional step. Thank you, Sandy.
Which John, which as you know from reading this, is what Mr. Renard plans to go to his only work first.
This isn't approving anything. We have to go in front of the board, and you could say at any time in the board, well, we want an assisted living. We want to have 25% of it doing. And that's a requirement. And you'll have that option.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Anyone online? Anyone else in the audience?
I just wanted to say that I'm for this, you know, pretty much as written. Obviously, there would be some changes. I think it's an opportunity for the town to diversify the tax base. Where a lot of our stuff is based upon retail. I mean, there's a lot of empty buildings out there. You don't like to have all eggs in one basket. You need the vibrancy that this creates. We're an aging population here in Tilton, especially Belknap County. You know, this helps that, provides some homes for that. But we also need some younger people in town. We need people that work in the town. You know, who's going to fill these jobs? Who's going to pay these taxes? Right now, Belknap County, where was about 10 years ago 16%, 65 and older. Right now, we're on about 24%, 65 and older. And we're looking to be probably about 40% to 50% in 10 more years, 65 and older. I don't know who's going to pay the taxes in the towns with the services that we have, you know, without filling the pipeline. You know, like John said about his child not to be able to live in town. I, too, have a child that really can't afford to live in this town. And I think that going forward, you know, that this is a good opportunity. The sewer's there, the bus services are out there. If rail ever comes back to town, the train's out there. I, it's, it's a unique opportunity as to where it is. As far as the resort aspect, I realize that hotels going up, that's nice. Lot of the resorts along that corridor over time have been changed over to condos. They really aren't even resorts anymore. The case of the Shalimar, I've seen restaurants try to go in. They haven't made it. I know that the state is housing people within Shalimar now, and you know, obviously, people need places to live. But I think this is a unique opportunity to put multiple demographics in here that adds to the vibrancy of your town. And I particularly like that there's going to be a commercial aspect within these communities. In other words, you know, a little coffee shop, a bakery, whatever they may be, for residents that live within these communities. Like I say, from the video, you can see how vibrant these communities are. And I just want to express my support for this and.
Can you just state your name? I don't think you did in the beginning, for the record.
Steve Jones, Ash Drive.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was going to ask you to, now that you've been through elephant, could you tell us who you are? Thank you. All right. I see. Pat?
I do express my support for this project as well. I would hope that you folks recommend this going to the taxpayers.
Do we ask for, show of hands, for the people? Not for them?
Okay, any more comments online? Hey, any more comments? I'll get you, Iris.
Tilton, I've been around here longer, but we remain around a static number of about 4,000 housing units. Approximately almost 1,000 of those were built before 1939. Another 20% of those were built in, before, in the 70s. You know, we're, we're an aging infrastructure town. It'd be nice to see something new, I guess, would be my last comment.
All right. Mrs. Ayano?
I would just like to say that I also want to express my interest in this. I think this is a wonderful thing. I have children that live in Massachusetts, in Connecticut, and, and Colorado. And the biggest thing and reasons why they built and bought their houses where they did is because it's a walking community. They have children. They want their children to be able to walk to school, not necessarily have to be bused. They want to be able to shop. They want to be able to send their kids. Like when I was a little girl, you could go to the connoisseur, and you could get yourself some candy. Your mother'd give you a nickel and say, here, go buy some candy. That's how old I am. But this is a wonderful thing. Plus, we need places where people that work in the town, they have a place to live so that they can afford it. Because then, unless we want our taxes to go completely sky high, where we have to give them big salaries so they can afford to buy places and live in places, we need these types of buildings. Thank you.
Could I make one last comment?
Yes, Chuck.
Yeah, thank you. I'm not trying to disagree with anyone. I know that there was a project up off of School Street, and every place in that development sold for over $400,000. And I am concerned, we can talk all we want to about affordable housing, but there's no guarantee. And at this point, as this, it turns out to be, if John is correct, with a $45 million project, that this is going to create affordable housing. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Yeah, I'd like to respond to that, Chuck. I've never said it's affordable housing. This affordable housing has a certain criteria per capita of what people earn. And this has never been affordable housing. We're talking workforce housing. We're talking about first responder housing. We're talking about your teachers have a place to move into when they come to the town. If you look at what the teacher's salary is and you look at what the value of our houses are today, there is no quality place for them to live. So in closing, I just want to say, and I think we're close to the end closing, it's really up to the planning board's vote and their decision. We know how these things work. It's if it's recommended, it goes to the town ballot, and it's most likely gets approved. If it doesn't get recommended, it's most likely it doesn't get approved. There are some outline cases when it does. So I hate to put the pressure on you guys, but you guys are making the decision on how we're going to develop our town in the future. And I thank you for your time. And you've heard a lot of from me in all the months, so I appreciate that. And that's all I have to say. Anybody else would like to add a comment? I'll put the mic down.
Any more comments from anyone? Tom?
Yeah. I got a few areas of concern here. One of them is Tilton is a town of 3 1/2 square miles, the population of 3,600. 2,400 of them are voters. So that leaves the balance of 1,200 children underage in service or whatever. I don't think it's the job of the town of Tilton to solve workforce housing or assisted living housing for the state of New Hampshire. They're going to build 900 units of apartments in Concord. They're going to build units. The petitioners come forward and said that they're doing this in, in Nashua. They're doing this in Manchester. They're doing this in Concord. They're doing this in Dover. They're doing this in Portsmouth. These are cities. They're not towns of 3,600 people. One of the things that was driven home to me was that there's 17,200 cars go through the town every day. If that's not a strain on our first responders, nothing is. We can't stop that, but we're going to get more. We're going to get another 200 to 300 cars a day going through the town. Now, I have some experience with senior housing. And what senior people do is they put in an application for every senior housing that they, within a 50-mile radius. And they stay on that list. They're always on that list. They stay on that list. And when their name comes up, if it ever comes up, they take the first one that's available. And they stay in there, and they wait until they get one closer to home or where they came from or where they want to be. That's the other thing. So I'm concerned about the safety of the citizens of the town, Tilton. If there's an accident down there on Route 3 and somebody in, somebody in the village here has a heart attack, how is that person going to get to the hospital? The, the petitioner has said that he's visited the veterans' home, and he's visited the PBD home, and they have empty beds. Well, what's the guarantee that he's not going to have vacancies? You know, we want to fill this place up, but you know, I know it's not a nursing home, but you know, this is, this is kind of, kind of sketchy for, for a population of working people, probably about 2,400. Thanks.
I just want to comment. The veterans' home has vacancies because they don't have nurses. And there are problems with nurses because they can't find a place to live. I just want to add that.
That's right. They can't find a place to live. And the PBD home is the same way. What's, what's this going to be any different?
My sister was the director of nurses for 30 years at the veterans' home. So I heard a little bit about it from her, and I actually called her. Because I asked, you know, is this a true story? And she goes, yes, it is a true story. So they built another 165 beds up there. There's over 100 beds that are empty that they can't fill, not because they don't have veterans, which I happen to be one. They can't fill them because they can't get the LNA's. That's the problem. There's no one can afford to live up here. Look, all, I'm a homeowner. Probably most of us in here are homeowners, right? Our homeowners are all worth a half a million dollars and plus now. Hey, great for us. Good, we all made money. But trying to bring young people in here to try to live is, is a nightmare for them. And so let's say, you know, this is a bad idea. This is terrible. Video doesn't make any sense to any of us. So we go and we build another 44 homes in there, which I can do, which I'm allowed to do. We really haven't solved anything. We've made another 44 homes that are worth $500,000 and plus more. This is actually a solution for us. And I understand your point. And there's a lot of people that don't want change in the town. Look, I, I understand that, I really do. I can give you an examples of it. I bought a piece of land. I thought it was out in the middle of nowhere. It was great. And the next guy, a guy put a development next to me. Well, I was upset. Now I'm a developer. So I understand it. But we need to move forward, and we need to protect our town. I can't even hire anybody to shovel my, my snow or to fix a roof without paying a fortune. And it's because there's no young people that can afford to live around here. And when they do, they have to charge a ridiculous amount of money. So I, I understand it, Tom, and I'm with you. I, I get it. I do.
Just a minute, Pat. Nate, Nate, and request, Nate?
So I think that we, you know, need to, to keep in mind that we cannot let perfect be the enemy of good and that if this were to pass, there's always room in the future for changes, you know, for finer tuning to ensure, you know, affordability, potentially, you know, voucher requirements, you know, what have you, if the town decides to, you know, take a different direction with these in the future.
Thank you, Nate. Yes, Pat?
I could not, not respond to what Tom was saying. You know, I've been doing this for 15 years. And I can remember not, not even two years after I became a selectman, that I sat up two doors down from where Catherine Rosner was, I became a selectman, that I sat up two doors down from where Catherine Rosner was, and I responded to an elderly person for help. And this person was so distraught because she needed assisted living, and the only, and this was 13 years ago. Born and raised in the town of Tilton, raised her children in the town of Tilton, and had nowhere to go. The closest place that she could find to leave here was Dover, New Hampshire, or Rochester. Those were her two choices 13 years ago. Now, if you just can't even imagine the emotional strain on the family because a husband and wife, she has to go into assisted living, but he can't afford to stay in the home. So what do you do? Born and raised in the town of Tilton, and there are many, many more that I have sat with and helped, tried to help. And right now, we've called around Rochester, Dover, York, Maine. Yes, the PBD put on an assisted living. There's different levels, like John said, there's different levels of assisted living. We're not talking, we're talking about even a level one, where you can go in, in an apartment, and if you needed help, you know, just not even a medical assistant, just somebody to help you in and out with your groceries or something like that, a level one. That's not a PBD home, that's not a veterans' home, kind of a level one. We're talking about living in the town that you were born and raised in. And I know, I am not born and raised in the town of Tilton, but I still call Tilton my home. So I can imagine the emotional impact that we're having right now. There's an awful lot of people, awful lot of people that are feeling this right now. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I am in support of looking and pursuing assisted living. I think it's critical. Pat, you're absolutely right. So John, color me in, whatever.
Becky Albert, I'm also here to just voice my support for this. Thank you.
Any other comments? Questions from John, for John?
Steve Jones again, just to speak to, obviously, the need for assisted living. But again, the workforce housing. I know the state wants to push workforce housing on towns, and they're going to. You know, this provides an opportunity to pick our demographic, who's coming. We're picking people who have jobs, who can afford that particular, those units. To speak to the hospitals, you know, times around here are changing. I remember when my children were being born, you know, 25 and 30 years ago, Laconia was putting in all their new birthing rooms. Those are all closed. You can't even have a kid around here anymore. I remember I had, a few years ago, go into the hospital in Franklin for a bleed, they had to send me over to Laconia, because they are shutting down. You know, times are changing around here. And like I say, we don't have, you know, people talk about, you go to the different restaurants around, you know, I own a business, people, you can't get help. You know, somebody wants to open a restaurant, it's good luck trying to staff it, you know, because you can't. You know, so we need places for people to live.
Even if this didn't go through, whether it does or doesn't, you could still go for a special acceptance, ZBA, with a plan on what you're actually going to do, and they could restrict you to that plan.
I don't know about that.
That's what CBA does, if you're not going by that zoning. So, you know, that could be done with a very specific requirement.
Well, you would have to meet all the five criteria, which includes hardship and, you know, the five criteria. So, I mean, there is that bar to meet.
Yep.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions? All right. I will close the public hearing.
That's 7:13. Close public hearing at 7:13.
All right, I'll return to planning board business. I need to sit with, I'm putting my glasses on.
Level one.
Level one, I can't. I've gotten to that point. All right, planning board, we need to take each one of these and vote as to whether we're going to recommend or not recommend them.
Is that under other business? I didn't know we were.
No, we have to vote today.
Yeah, well, these warrants are due to the clerk to go on the ballot, so they have to, so they have to be in. So you need to make your recommendations. You can have another meeting tomorrow to do it, but, I mean.
So the first one is on the solar ordinance. Is there any discussion before we vote? And I'll make a motion to amend it. Is there a second?
Aye.
All in favor of amending, recommending solar ordinance? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Second is multifamily conversion. I'll make a motion to recommend multifamily conversion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor of recommending it? Say aye.
Aye.
And then the next is the petition warrant article. I'll make a motion that we recommend the petition warrant article. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Aye. Let me say aye twice. Okay. Well, then we'll take a hand vote. All in favor? Please raise your hand. All opposed? Okay, so it fails, so we don't recommend it. Okay. Thank you. That's it. Okay, what do we have next?
Will it still appear on the ballot?
It'll be on the ballot.
Just not recommended? Okay, all right. Okay, all right. That's what I thought, but I'm like, wait, we're not like deciding whether it goes on to be voted, right?
Once you file the petition, it's on.
Got it, yeah, just.
And Chair, you can table those minutes. I didn't provide all the minutes. I think that just was a carryover. We'll, we can address those at our regular meeting. If the board is in agreement, yeah.
So I'll make a motion to adjourn. No, we're not. We're going to hold the minutes over.
But there was other business, right?
The other business was the vote.
If somebody has other business.
Do you have other business?
Yeah, I was concerned with the thing that's going on, 541 Main Street, the former Mikes. So they were supposed to come up with a site plan. I haven't seen them come in, so they're going to miss their deadline or... Okay. Now, for that, they're required to go to the Conservation Commission. They didn't show up at the last one. All the water drains right into the wetlands, so have they been told that they should go to the Conservation? Typically, all the other ones, we've had them go, even the one single garage.
Okay, they can go to, we'll have them go to Conservation.
Yeah, so that they save time for themselves to get it done.
I drove by, and this is the first time I've seen some cars cleaned up. There's no motorhomes, there's no...
Yeah, I think the, I spoke with the owner when he submitted his site plan, and they're actually talking about imposing fines if they don't adhere to the 39 cars, which I think is a good idea.
And they've got all their snow removal, because they're pushing the snow is going into the wetlands in the front corner there.
Will that be Conservation again?
Yeah. So that's why it's important for us to have the input from there.
Oh, even if it's in the wetlands?
Madam Chair? Madam Chair? I believe there is a report from the Conservation Commission regarding that property?
No, they never did.
Oh, okay.
There is a report from Conservation on 142 East Main.
Thank you, I stand corrected.
Which will be coming before the board on the...
I also would like to compliment Leanne on the fact that the used car lot, which used to be, was it E Cars?
Yeah, it's empty.
It's empty. Congratulations, Leanne.
Yeah, thank you.
It's for sale or lease or something?
I'm sorry?
It's for sale or lease or something, at least.
They're looking to put something new in there. The owners were very cooperative and did a great job, once they received the letter from me regarding that property. And they, they did a great job at getting the owner, the leaser to, they ended the lease and got rid of all the cars. So they're looking to put something else in there. Yeah, and they'll be coming to the board with that change of use. They've got a couple of things. So, yeah, that was, that E Cars was getting pretty...
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
So I know we had...
One success story.
Yes. We'll take it.
There's two other ones behind it that you have to deal with.
So I know we had talked about the Conservation Commission in the past, and they had requested that we send everything their way before it comes to us, so...
Not before it comes to us, necessarily. We don't hold up people because they have to go to the Conservation Commission.
I think they get an email or something. Yeah. We send them an email.
What I do is I'll send the packets out to them when I send them to you.
Right, right, no. But they had requested that we have everyone go to them if they're coming to us for a site plan related thing. So maybe it's worth just telling people that they should go there every single time or recommending.
Yeah, I think we have a checklist that has things, like if there's adjacent wetlands and stuff like that, there's many times, if there's nothing there, it's not...
Oh, okay, yeah.
That's what I was going to say.
But pretty much everything we got around here is dealing with drainage issues and...
If it doesn't affect anything, they don't, they won't care.
But wouldn't, wouldn't certain types of businesses always have, like, a high potential for impact regardless of the location? So wouldn't there be, like, certain manufacturing or industrial businesses that might require, you know, certain types of, you know, processing of, like wastewater and stuff like that? Like, that, you know, I'm...
Sometimes they do it internally, and it wouldn't affect any property whatsoever.
Okay.
So I think the purpose is that we have various boards and commissions in the town that we...
Look to.
Look to. And we've had volunteers and people have been appointed for them that are there to assist to make sure all regulations. And they don't necessarily have any jurisdiction on anything, but they're there to give us the support, because a lot of us don't have that information that's available out there. And it's nice to have that, when you have people with 40, 50 years reviewing every single plan or that in the town. They come up with the ideas that we didn't think about, so that we don't make a grave error.
Yeah, no, so I think, like, I guess my point was, like, since we may direct people to the Conservation Commission, and since they meet monthly and with the way our schedules line up, we should, people could be held up by coming to us before they go to the Conservation Commission. And so there could be significant time saving if we just have people go there before they come to us.
I don't think we've ever held anybody up. What we can do is make it a condition that they go to the Conservation Commission.
So we would make that, yeah.
Yes. Okay?
Right, and things, if there's a new, if there's a new project that's coming forward that has wetlands impact, then they automatically get sent through Conservation. Some of these existing projects, you know, are falling, whether they go to Conservation because they're existing wetlands, existing buildings, there's not new infrastructure being built. As far as 549, Conservation Commission has weighed in on that project already, and we do have, I have, I can provide the documentation, but if the board were liking to go, again, I have an email from Conservation of 549. I'm sorry?
The former Mikes Auto?
549, yep, yep. I have one from them. We can have them, they didn't go before, and I believe they spoke about it at a meeting in general, with conditions that they recommend to the planning board. But we can have the owner himself go before Conservation, but that's the call.
And being on the Conservation Commission and attending all the meetings, I never saw that coming for them. I know they said, why hasn't it?
Well, maybe it's just from the chair. I can, I will forward you the document, okay? But I don't have any problem with them going before them, but I do have notes from them on that property. So maybe it came from, like, the chair.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Like you look for a moderator?
Who's the most people?
Town moderator? Come on.
What happened to Helen?
Sure, her term's up. I don't think she signed up for it.
Oh, oh, oh.